Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. The Rehnham, Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional School Committee, our public hearing here on Wednesday, March 28th, at the Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional High School. Thank you all for joining us and please join us right now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As I mentioned, we want to open the public hearing in accordance with the rules of public forum as defined in Massachusetts Statute, Chapter 30A, Section 20, and with Bridgewater-Rehnham School Committee Policy, BEH-E. And we'll go over the guidelines in a minute, but just want to introduce our committee. At my far right, we have Member Julie Skopares. Next to her is Member Tony Gelfi, Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, our Vice Chair, Mr. Michael Dolan. To my far left, Members Jason Hammond, Kevin Marrera, Dr. Susan Pruwandowski, our Superintendent, Mr. Derek Swenson, and I am Chair Pat Riley. And also want to acknowledge, we have some town officials who have joined us this evening, which we greatly appreciate. From Bridgewater, we have Council Members Bill Woods, Mr. Tim Fitzgibbons, Chair of the Council, and also Mr. Tony Semenetti, Finance Manager, and Assistant Town Manager in Bridgewater, Kim Williams. And all of you, thank you very much. Also, cable mentioned that this is being recorded so that everyone who's not here can watch it. And again, with the guidelines we'll follow for the public hearing, first, please note that this hearing is for informational purposes and the school committee will not vote on the budget as presented this evening. At the conclusion of the hearing, I will entertain a motion to take the budget as presented under advisement. At the school committee's special meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, April 4th, at the Rehnham Middle School, the budget as presented this evening will be considered and a vote will be taken at that time. For the purpose of tonight's hearing, our Budget Subcommittee Chairperson, Dr. Susan Pruwandowski, will present the budget. We will then ask our Superintendent, Mr. Derek Swenson, if he wishes to add anything or to comment on the presentation. Following that, I will entertain any questions or comments from members of the committee and we will then ask for any public input. In conformance with the rules of public forum and our school committee policy, please note that any citizen wishing to speak before the committee should identify himself or herself by name and address. Our policy requests that each speaker limit themselves to three minutes, but the Chair has discretion in extending that if appropriate. In accordance with the rules and with the permission of the Chair, all citizens shall speak to the full committee through the Chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. Any committee member may direct questions to any speaker through the Chair in order to clarify the comments of the speaker. And that's according to our policy. So we thank you again very much for coming. And with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our Budget Chairperson, Dr. Susan Pruwandowski.
Welcome, everyone, to our 2018-2019 Budget Hearing Presentation. My name is Susan Pruwandowski. And other members of the Budget Subcommittee are Mr. Tony Gelfi, Mrs. Julie Skopares, and Mr. Michael Dolan. And I'd like to thank the members of the Budget Subcommittee and our administration for all their hard work in preparing for this presentation. Oops, already made a mistake. All right. The Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional District Mission Statement is to provide excellence in education for all students in an environment that values individuals. And we believe that this budget demonstrates our commitment to the district's mission statement as well as addressing the budget concerns of our two towns. Our budget assumptions: we develop a needs-based budget, support the district's strategic and improvement plans, meet contractual, regulatory, legal, and statutory responsibilities. Meet contractual, regulatory, legal, and statutory responsibilities. And please note that these obligations are mandated and required. Provide consistent, academically rigorous programs within the district. Provide instructional resources and technology that supports teaching and learning. Provide educational and social-emotional supports within safe and secure facilities to maintain our class size. And to utilize a proactive approach to increasing enrollments due to ongoing local residential construction projects. Our budget cost drivers are our additional required staffing, our facilities. We have aging facilities in the district and our youngest building is now 10 years old. Our technology: we are working very hard to update our Wi-Fi capacity in the district and working with TMLP to increase the bandwidth and decrease costs so that we can have better technology in the district. Our contractual obligations: our insurances and our out-of-district special education tuition and transportation. And just to remind folks that we do not get reimbursed for our special education transportation. Every budget season, we take the opportunity to explain one of our cost drivers. One year, we went over special education. One year, we went over transportation. And this year, we're going to discuss our aging facilities. The regional agreement states that each town is responsible for their own buildings and the district budget covers the high school. It has been an unwritten agreement in all the years that I've been here that any cost over $10,000 would go to the town for payment. We try to adhere to this agreement as much as possible. And just to show you, from 2017 January to January of 2018, we have spent approximately $391,205 out of our operational budget to account for these repairs. And you can see that it's things, the electrical system, the security system, sprinklers, boilers, roofs, phones, landscaping repairs, building management, for that total of the $391,205.4. And you can see that we actually have some deferred costs of $133,673. And that was cost deferred to some of the green initiatives such as the LED lighting and the HVAC equipment. And I would like to thank Mr. Fox, our Facilities Director, for his hard work and his due diligence to allow for these reimbursements. But we just wanted to take the opportunity to remind folks that these repairs are coming out of our operational budget. Some of our cost avoidance measures are in-district special education programs. We are always looking for opportunities where appropriate to keep our students in their community. We do our collaborative bidding, natural gas and our supplies. We do our in-house snow removal, which we've been busy these past few weeks. Our technology services: we use a local company, Unified Technology, to help us with that. And then our green initiatives, which is the LED lighting, the HVAC at the high school, and we've tried to go paperless as much as possible. After careful consideration of the Superintendent's budget proposal, combined with our two towns' budget expectations, we have decreased our personal request to eight positions. So for fiscal year 2019, the school committee is proposing one Grade 1 teacher, two Grade 2 teachers, one history teacher, two school psychologists, and two social workers or school adjustment counselors, for a total of eight positions. We are always concerned with our class size, especially in the first and second grade, and also with our increasing social and emotional needs of our students. The history teacher at the high school allows more flexibility in the electives that we can offer. And this brings us to our class size. And you'll notice with the one extra grade in Grade 1, that brings the class size down to 21 to 23. And adding two in Grade 2 brings us down to 23 to 25, which we feel is a bit more manageable for those younger grades. And you'll notice that most other grades are similar or a few students less. And we'll have to keep an eye on our Grade 6 for that enrollment over the summer. Which brings us to our proposed FY '19 budget. And if you'll notice in the pie chart, I'm not going to read every single number, but you'll see that Administration, which is the blue wedge, represents 3% of the budget. And these are salaries and expenditures for the Office of the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, the Business Department, and all of our technology licenses. Instructional Services is in the red, represents 56% of our budget, and this is the biggest piece of the pie. This is why we're here. And this is our salaries of our Principals, Assistant Principals, Teachers, our ESPs or paraprofessionals, our Guidance Counselors, our school psychologists, our school secretaries, our proctors, our librarians, our substitutes, as well as our textbook, school supplies, and technology. Other school services in the brown represent 10% of our budget, and these are salaries and expenditures for our nursing services, our school resource officers, extracurricular and athletic programs, as well as transportation for regular and special education. Operations and maintenance is green, and that's 7%. And that's for the upkeep of our buildings as well as our custodial salaries and supplies. Our fixed costs are in gray, and that's 19% of our budget. And this is expenses for health insurance for active and retired employees, our unemployment expenses, our building and liability insurance, our workman's compensation insurance, our life insurance, and our pension assessments. And I just want to note that unlike town department budgets, all of this is included in our budget. Program with other schools is in the orange for 5%, and that includes tuition for our out-of-district placements as well as charter schools and school choice students. And finally, you'll see that we have an asset allocation of $10,000. This is the amount that we put in the stabilization fund, which we've been doing for many years. We are now required to include this in our budget under the 7,000 series, and that's why you see that there. So that is a final budget without debt of $72,310,428. And with debt of $3,119,350, a final budget, operational and debt, of $75,429,778. And how are we going to pay for this budget? So our local revenues, this is what we in the district have. Our miscellaneous receipts, and that's our facilities rentals, is $130,000. Our user fees of $215,000. This includes our sports fees of $150,000, our parking fees of $29,000, and our transportation fees of $36,000, for that total of 215, which goes right back into the budget. Our E&amp;D appropriation this year, we have $1.2 million. And this is really our district savings account. This is money at the end of the year when all the bills are paid and our circuit breaker is finalized. We put any money that's left over into our E&amp;D account and we use that to help fund the next year's budget. Our investments of funds of $45,000 for a total of $1,590,000 from local revenue. Our other revenue calculation is the state revenue. And this is our Chapter 70 and Chapter 71 funds of $23,103,54. The district revenue, which we just mentioned, of $1,590,000. And then the town assessments of $47,617,374 for the grand total of the $72,310,428 budget. The town assessment of the $47,617,374 is broken down into the two towns. So Rehnham's portion for FY '19 will be $18,767,038 with a 7.78% increase. Bridgewater's portion will be $28,853,36 for an 8.44% increase. And you'll see on the bottom that we just wanted to show the enrollments as of October 1st. Rehnham has 2,191 students and Bridgewater has 3,255 students. Our budget timeline: we will have a special school committee meeting on Wednesday, April 4th, at the Rehnham Middle School at 7:00. The district treasurer will certify the budget on Wednesday, April 26th. We will have a Town of Bridgewater final vote on May 8th, and the Rehnham Town Meeting will be on May 21st. And finally, this is why we're here. The Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional School District will continually strive to offer excellent programming and facilities which ensure the optimal development of all our students and their commitment to the social good. And we thank everyone for coming tonight and for your continued support. And that concludes the FY '18-19 budget presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Pruwandowski. And as we mentioned earlier, we'd like to ask our Superintendent, Mr. Swenson, if you wish to add anything or comment on the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you, Dr. Pruwandowski, for your report out on the budget. I'd just like to take this opportunity to first thank all the folks that were involved in the creation and development of this budget to this point. Our building admin, our central admin, our teachers, parents, and also our Subcommittee, Financial Subcommittee, for their endless work in trying to put together a budget that supports the needs of our students and staff, but at the same time is reasonable and fiscally responsible to our towns. Obviously, some difficult decisions needed to be made to get down from my original preliminary budget, mostly in the area, obviously, of staffing. My original budget had 16 and 1/2 positions. Again, that's a needs-based budget. That's what I'm telling the committee at that point, we would need for this district to work at an optimal rate. Obviously, we realize with staffing, that's one of the biggest cost drivers in our budget. So we have to kind of go back to the drawing board through our Financial Subcommittee meetings and come down and really start to prioritize what we truly need. We have two towns that are growing. We have a lot of construction projects on both sides of the district. Our K-4 population is definitely on the rise. We have, in the past, tried to build in two to be determined teachers because of, over the course of the last few summers, I've had building principals at the elementary level doing what they should be doing, and that's advocating for their building and advocating for their students and staff. And in the summer after the budget is already passed, advocating for additional positions because of a high influx of students over the summer months. This year, we're trying to be as proactive as possible in really identifying the areas that we truly need staffing, and that would be in the areas of Grades 1 and 2. One of the greatest needs, though, for this district, and it was part of my preliminary budget, is really, truly to address some of the social-emotional needs of our children. I shared some data in my preliminary budget. That last school year, we had close to 6,000 referrals to our nurses, district-wide, for students that were encountering some type of social-emotional issue. That resulted in close to 1,000 referrals to either our guidance, school psych, or school adjustment counselors, district-wide. Unfortunately, it resulted in 76 hospitalizations of our students. This is not a BR issue. This is not an issue in the Commonwealth. It's a nationwide concern. I also shared during my preliminary budget that there was a survey nationwide from school administrators regarding some of their biggest concerns and trends in public education. And without a doubt, social, emotional, and the mental health issues that our children are encountering was one of their greatest concerns, and that's ours here as well. So I'm proud of everyone who has taken part in this budget. I thank Dr. Pruwandowski as the Chair of the Financial Subcommittee and all the members of the Financial Subcommittee getting us to this point. Just a caveat, there still may be some work that needs to be done in the next Tuesday, Wednesday night, at the Special School Committee meeting. That might be reflective in that number as well. We do have a Budget Subcommittee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at the Rehnham Middle School in the library, where we'll be looking at some of further numbers. We also have a meeting with the Rehnham FinCom earlier that evening. So we're trying to work with the towns to see where they are with things and make sure, again, that we're putting together a budget that supports the needs of our students and staff while at the same time is reasonable to the towns of both Bridgewater and Rehnham. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Now I'd like to open it up to school committee members. Any questions or comments from school committee members? Mr. Marrera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions. And I know when you look at the budget, which is approximately, I think, 12, 13 pages long when you go by all the line items, I know there's two things that are probably small change compared to the big line items that we deal with. But I do have two questions that, as I'm still only a year on the committee, I'm still learning to look at everything. And two of the questions I have, if I can find my highlight. The first question I have is undergrounds maintenance to the Town of Rehnham and the Town of Bridgewater, there's a line item for $18,000 for each community. What exactly is that $18,000 for each community for?
That goes to the Park and Recreation Departments on both sides of the district for the care of the grounds, school grounds. In Rehnham, the Park and Rec Department takes care of all of our school grounds at the Merrill, the Law Liberty, and the Rehnham Middle School. On the Bridgewater side, we do have our own grounds crew that takes care of the high school, because, again, that's not considered an actual town building. That's a building of the region. However, we do have, they do take care of the grounds at the current Mitchell at the Middle, our folks. And I believe the Park and Recreation people in the Town of Bridgewater take care of Legion Field, that I believe the Williams Intermediate students use at times for recess.
So who does the grounds at the Williams School and the Old High School, which is now Mitchell at the Middle, BMS?
The actual school grounds are our grounds folks, John Rowley.
Okay, so Bridgewater Park and Rec doesn't do any schools other than Legion Field, which is a town-owned property?
Correct.
And they're still receiving the same amount of money as the Town of Rehnham Park and Rec that does three schools?
Correct.
So that's my question, because it doesn't seem fair that both communities are getting an equal amount of money and one of the communities is doing all the work. How long has that $18,000 been, that set number?
It's probably been for quite a few years since my time in the district, Mr. Marrera.
Okay, and that leads into Part B. Part two of that question is, I know, I'm assuming when this happened, that $18,000, since then, those staff at those town departments that manage those areas, their salaries have gone up, their obligations, insurance, and contractual obligations have gone up. But yet, we haven't raised the $18,000 all at all in the last...
It's been a set number.
That's something I'd like to see if we can look at.
Sure.
Whether we're giving too much to one community, whether the other community is accomplishing more. Maybe we don't adjust the entire budget, but out of those two $18,000s, we find a way to adjust it evenly. So if one community has to get more than the other because they're accomplishing more, then I'd like to see if we can look at that, please?
Yes. Get that through.
Thank you, Mr. Marrera.
I did have one other thing.
Sure.
On, one other item I had was the SRO. I'm looking here, it's $59,875. Is that split between the two SROs in Rehnham and Bridgewater? It doesn't seem like a lot of money.
No, Mr. Marrera. That, in the Town of Bridgewater, the district pays for the school resource officer. And in the Town of Rehnham, the police department picks up the rate for our SRO on the Rehnham side.
And can you explain why that is?
That's just the agreement that we've had with the towns, again, since we've been here. It's, Rehnham, for many years, has decided to include that in their police municipal budget, whereas the Town of Bridgewater, we work with them to help support that salary.
Okay, so, just so I understand it correctly, the, our school district pays for the SRO on the Bridgewater side, but the Rehnham Police Department, which is paid by the taxpayers of Rehnham, funds their SRO?
Correct.
Again, that doesn't make sense to me, but I'd like to see if we can take a look at that and figure out what's going on there.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Marrera and Mr. Dolan.
If I could, Madam Chair. Dr. Pruwandowski, you had given dates for the, on Slide 5, for the aging facility.
It was... January 1 of '17 to January 1 of '18.
Thank you. I missed that when you were presenting. Thank you. And then, to Mr. Marrera's point, on those items that we get billed from the town on, Mr. Marrera and I, I think, are in agreement in that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that, here we are asking the towns for our operating budget, and then, months later, we turn around and we are getting billed by the town who gave us our budget for items like that, to cut the grass at the Williams, to test our fire hydrants on our school grounds. Those items are billed back to the district. So we do have to figure this out. When our increases given by the towns, and give credit, we do, we have, over the past several years, gotten increases, not what we have asked for, but we have gotten increases, the bills that we get from the town don't change. Those don't decrease. So we're taking money out of different parts of the budget to cover those bills that still exist and don't go down. So it, to Mr. Marrera's point, we do need to have conversations with the towns on those bills and why we're still having to pay them when the assessment is adjusted.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Any other questions or comments? I've seen no other comments from the committee. I would like to then open it up to public input. And again, in conformance with the rules of our policy, if you would, anyone who wishes to address the committee, please come, state your name and address for the record, or your position, as it might be, and direct your questions or comments, and we encourage you to do so.
You have assigned a sheet, too. Do you want us to sign it?
If you could, please.
You won't be able to read it, but sure.
We know you, though, I think.
For those that don't know me, I'm Bill Wood. I'm one of the Town Counselors, Senior Bridgewater. I represent District 6. I've been on the council since the beginning, and since the beginning, I've been on the Budget and Finance Subcommittee of the Council. For a long time now, I've been the Chair of that committee. I'm also well in tune with the school district. I have some members of the TJ Square team here. I volunteer as a mentor for the team. So this kind of feels like a second home. Through that and other vehicles, I know many of the teachers within the school district. And I think you're doing an awesome, awesome job with the programs. The theater's doing quite well. I'm biased toward that because my daughter's in the theater. TJ does great. You've got two new blue banners coming up. The other district programs, including the special needs, are, you know, well-established and great programs. But I'm here tonight to talk about the budget. So I'm pleased to announce that the Town of Bridgewater can support a 3.68% increase over last year's assessment for BR. This is the seventh straight year of an increase in support for the school system. I'd like to touch upon our budget process, which is completely transparent. We've had several members of the school committee come to several meetings. All the paperwork is available. We've also shared, exchanged information with the school department. So I have things like the salary schedules, the FTEs, under the Education Association collective bargaining... Collective Bargaining Agreement. I have pupil counts, and we have some other statistical pieces. Our budget season starts very early in the year. It really starts in fall. And we start off with a resolution that describes how we're going to define our revenue for the town's budget. And during that process, we lay out an unwritten rule, and I've said this multiple times in meetings, and our budget meetings aren't as well-populated as yours, so we have to find the recipe for that, but we lay out one simple rule. And the simple rule is no layoffs and no overrides. So we start with revenue projections. We start with revenue projections from the director, our finance director, and like we saw broken down here tonight, we understand the revenue that's projected in the governor's budget for local aid, which this year has announced a 3.5% increase over last year. We also have local receipts, excise tax on your cars. We have tax levy that's governed by the two-and-a-half law as to how much we have. We have new growth. We have reassessment of new growth. And we have other projections within the revenue projection. So that's our starting point, a revenue projection of exactly how much money the town will pull in. And that includes over $1 million from ambulance receipts that are used to fund the ambulances and staff. That also includes some other one-time uses. That includes also benefits that are really a pass-through for our budget. So, an example would be our veterans' benefits. We get veterans' benefits and those are distributed out to families and others related to veterans' needs. So, once we have our revenue projections, we go through what's called the shared revenue model. So we're dealing now with five-year projections, not just this year, but five years out. We know the age of cars for our excise tax. We know how many permits are being pulled for buildings and the value of the potential growth. We know what the assessment's going to be. We know which properties are being pulled off the tax rolls. We know pretty much everything about what's happening with any item that could affect the revenue stream for Bridgewater. There are some unpredictable ones, such as growth. We don't know when that new house will come online. We know the permit was pulled, but it hasn't been assessed. It will eventually become new growth. It will eventually be added to the tax levy. We take a projection based on experience. We use pretty much an 85% rule from the prior year. New growth is great when you are in an economy that's building. When the economy falls, that's one of the first things that drops off. So then we move to a shared revenue model, and many of the committee here have seen the shared revenue model. We've published it. It's documented out also with a forecast. Shared revenue is things like all those taxes I talked about, the tax levy, the excise tax, and other pieces. And there's a formula that has historic value between the town operational side of the budget and the educational side of the budget. And within shared revenue, it's almost a 50-50 split. So when we see new growth come online, 50% of that is assigned to the school portion of the budget. 50% is used for the operational side. We also have constraints in our town budget we have for several years, and we plan around those. And the planning is done around the revenue. So, we don't necessarily build a needs-based budget. If we built a needs-based budget, we would say we need probably eight more people in the highway department, because our highway department was stripped of resources back in 2008 to make way for public safety. The police chief for several years now has asked for reorganization to add captains into the staff to fortify an organizational structure that makes more sense. But because we've been revenue constrained, we haven't done that, and people understand that. We've been revenue constrained, so we do collective bargaining agreements. It's out in the open. Everybody knows what the revenue stream's going to be. Everybody knows how many people work in town, and the departments have worked within that. Public safety, both collective bargain agreements right now are under 3%, which includes not only the COLA but also the STEP value. Okay? So I mentioned that within the town budget, there is an educational portion. We directly support four school systems, BR, BP, and two agricultural schools. So when we talk about the educational portion of the town budget, we're not just talking about BR, we're talking about multiple. Now, the other three are smaller, obviously, and greatly smaller, but we have to, we have an obligation to support those. Historically, the town budget has floated somewhere around 60%. That's consistent with most municipalities. When you include debt, which is a cost of education, I've seen that number as high as 70% when this building first came online and the Mitchell debt was included. Mitchell debt has now dropped off. So, in this year, in this projection, it's about 60%. When we add the debt for the study for next year, it will slightly increase. When we eventually get around to a plan, I expect the portion of education within the operational side of the town of Bridgewater will increase again to above 60%. We talk about things within the budgets. You know, the budget for the school site, I think, was like $72 million. Town of Bridgewater's about $50, $55 million. Yeah, it's true. $18,000 is given to the town for services based on property. It's a very small item in the budget. On the other side, we don't ask the kids that are on the golf team to go play on the Rainham Golf Course. They play for nothing over at the Bridgewater Golf Course. So there's a little bit of a trade-off there, and people need to understand that. All right. So, within the BR assessment for this year, and, excuse me, I probably know your budget as well as you do at this point, and I know the Bridgewater budget as well. So in the assessment, the ask for this year is $28,849,487. What Bridgewater can support is $27,583,132. That's a difference right now of $1,266,355. There's a lot of red flags in the school budget. There's, it's actually possibly going to, it will definitely create structural deficit. Little things I picked up as red flags. Again, these don't affect the overall budget, they're just, they're piano tuning, up 67%. Ice time, up 17%. A contract for internet, up 158%. Transportation, up 20%. And teachers at the Williams Intermediate is up 7%. So when we look at these values, there's a lot of cost drivers. And the cost drivers are a confluence of a number of factors. There are large increases in non-classroom activities such as transportation. Yes, it's mandated to get a student from point A to point B, but it's not mandated to go with expensive transportation. In this budget, the transportation for this year, this year alone, rises by $920,000. That's a lot of other services that can be granted. Now, I don't look into what is, how many students are using $920,000. I don't look at, you know, how many students are riding the buses, although I think there are fewer. But I look at the delta in that one-line item over last year. That's a huge cost driver in the budget process, right? So, I don't know if it's possible to go back to transportation, renegotiate. I don't know the structure of that contract. But I know that as a percentage, when you look at 20% over last year, that's a huge cost driver out of the budget. There are also substantial increases in CBAs, specifically the Education Association. As I said, I think the teachers do a great job. I fully support them. I think they're paid well. And I have an example. So let's say that you hired me. I have a master's degree. I also have a degree in computer science. Let's say you hired me to teach a Java course, for example. So if we not only look at this contract, but we look at the last contract, this contract, I believe, was signed in August of this year. And we had a challenging budget year last year, so I'm surprised how the budget went. But if you look at last, the last budget, which started in fiscal year '15, if I were hired in as a STEP 7 into that budget, my salary that year would have been $66,217. The following year, when you take into a STEP COLA, the increase would be 5.5%. I don't know anywhere where anyone gets 5.5% increase. And there's other, obviously, other total cost of employment. So the second year I'm here, in '16, my salary would be $69,881. The third year is a 6.2% increase for my third year as an employee. The fourth year, which is the first year of this current budget, is another 4.8% increase. So 5.5, 6.2, 4.8, followed by next year, a 5.1 and a 5.9. A total of 30% increase over six years. When you look at year over year, the percentage of the CBA, when you take, when you factor in headcount applied to the cost of each cell on page 45 of the page, the cost rises by 3.7%. 3.7% in that one-line item alone exceeds the 3.5 that the governor's promised and what the town can afford.
Mr. Wood, I hate to interrupt, but I'm being told we're way over the three minutes, so if you could try to...
I understand. This is kind of critical, isn't it?
It is, and we're giving you, you know, extra latitude.
I appreciate that. I am fortunately almost done.
Thank you.
So when we go back to cost drivers, we have those factors in place. Finally, I do have some recommendations. I don't control your budget. I'm not involved in creating the budget. I was really surprised when we started the council form of government and I got involved in the budget process that I could have little influence on what the 60% of the town of Bridgewater's budget would be. But I do have some recommendations between now and when you finally vote. The governor's budget increase is 3.5%, and the Bridgewater assessment promise is 3.68. I think what you need to do is go back and fine-tune some of those large numbers. You need to go back to transportation and say, "We can't afford your contract, we need to renegotiate." And you might need to go back to other contracts and make them more reasonable as well to bring down the overall cost structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any members of the committee, or Mr. Swenson, do you have any questions for Mr. Wood? Anybody from the committee? Mrs. Carreras?
I just want to say that on the new contract that we just signed, new hires are at a freeze for the first three years. There will not be a STEP increase. Not that we're going to have any new hires at 3.68%, but we didn't just give out a percentage increase, and it's very difficult to get out steps that are already in there. Not that we didn't try in the past, in the couple of years that I've been on the negotiations subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carreras. Anyone else?
One last point on that, if I could. So, when I look at FTE counts across, so we can only use the estimate that was provided. So, for this year, it's 388 headcount. For next year, it was 388 headcount. The following year, it's 388 headcount. The only thing that shifted on the FTE count was it moved down a line. So, I assume with new positions and maybe some attrition, that number's going to change. So your bottom line's going to change. But when your final year in the contract is a 2.5% COLA, that gets very expensive. We're not only going to have a problem this year, we have a problem next year and the year after.
Mr. Swenson.
I'll just say, in terms of the contract with our teachers, we worked very hard on both sides of the table, management and labor, to come to an agreement, knowing that budgets are what they are. I think that our side for negotiations, as well as BREA's side, worked very well together to come up with some creative ideas on how to control some of what you're speaking to, Mr. Wood. My folks actually took a 1.5% increase this year, and not the 2. And yes, on the backside, it is going to be the 2.5. But knowing that, and knowing that in their side as well, that they were going to be running up against some difficult times this year, they agreed to that number. Also, they also agreed, as Mrs. Carreras just stated, freezing those first three years to try to control those horizontal and vertical movements within that pay scale. There are other things that we put into that as well. I will say this, the job of a teacher, the job of an administrator, a paraprofessional, secretaries, custodians, and anyone who's involved in schools has changed incredibly over the course of the last 10 years. And I am confident when I say, everyone who's in those contracts, or independent contracts in this district, earn every nickel that they make. And I just want to speak to the transportation piece. Transportation's out of our control. We go out to bid. We have procurement process. Mr. Lucini came in with the number. That was the lowest number that we could have with the services that were provided. The state has promised us through regionalization that we would get 100% reimbursement, with the caveat, if funding is available. We're about 60%. So our operational budget has to absorb that other 40%. Also, when you talk about transportation, you're not only talking about general transportation with buses, you're talking about special needs transportation, which we are legally obligated to provide. And there's no negotiation in that. So yes, those are major cost drivers, but there are things that we have to take into account because we're mandated to. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Thank you for your input, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. The only other piece of information I'm waiting on is actually the full contract. Someone's going to email it to me, hopefully, because I only got the salary schedules, I didn't get the full contract.
Thank you. Dr. Prewindowski, did you have a comment, a question?
Well, no, I just had a comment that when we were negotiating the teachers' contract, we also knew that the PEC, which is the insurance piece, was coming up this year. And we did take the opportunity to restructure that, and we'll be, I'll be going in more detail at the regular school committee meeting, but by the cooperation of everyone involved in that PEC, we had a cost avoidance, I can't say savings, we had a cost avoidance of almost $1 million, which almost offsets the steps and lanes. So, we understood that that was coming, and we were very happy with the 1.5% knowing that we were also going to be asking our staff and our faculty to pay a little bit more for their insurance premium. So, it's a give and take, and we were very confident with that PEC agreement as well as our negotiations. We inherited a grid that is crazy, and we've been saying that for years and years, and we've removed lanes, which is very difficult in negotiations when you advance, if you advance along your education, you'd like to be compensated. And we also froze those first three steps, which was a huge give. And we were very comfortable with that. We appreciate the financial difficulties of the towns, but as a school committee, we do need to go out there and say what we need to run our school business. So, we appreciate your end as much as I'm sure you appreciate our end. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prewindowski. Anyone else wish to address the committee?
Hi, my name is Lisa Omen. I'm a longtime resident of the town, but I'm not a townie yet. And I am speaking for the students of Bridgewater. I'm also a teacher in second grade, and I really appreciate all the work that goes into doing these budgets. I can't imagine what you went through. Sad to say that all 16 positions aren't there, but there are eight positions. And my question is, if there are further cuts, and it doesn't sound like the town of Bridgewater is going to be needing that $28 million budget, if I understand it correctly, I'm not, am I understanding that correctly, does that mean there's going to be more budget cuts as far as faculty? Is that something that can be addressed? I see there's one grade one, two grade two, and the behavioral, school psychologist, and adjustment counselors.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Thank you, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. As I stated earlier in my remarks, based upon information that came to us this evening and through FinCom with our meeting on Tuesday night, we will then have to take those numbers into consideration, go into our financial subcommittee meeting, look at the numbers that we have to work with, and try to possibly make some adjustments to what Dr. Prewindowski presented here this evening. to what Dr. Piewandowski presented here this evening, based upon those numbers.
Okay. Well, I would, um, this is the month of February. We just ended up Dr. Seuss Week, and we read the Lorax. So I feel like I'm speaking for the students, the trees. And the little ones, they really need all the support we can give them. The social, emotional issues of the students that are coming into our district right now are more than I've ever seen in my, um, many years of teaching, and our jobs are getting very difficult. Um, we're in the old Mitchell, well, the old middle school at this point, and we're so grateful that we were able to move into this building. And, but we do have to realize that our classroom size right now is about five hundred square feet with projected twenty-seven students. Right now, I have twenty-eight students. The recommended size for twenty students is nine hundred square feet. So we are working as hard as we can in our small spaces, and I really would encourage the town of Bridgewater to support the budget fully that's been asked for, for the town through the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Omen. Anyone else who wishes to comment on the budget? Please come forward. Mr. Swenson, just informational, if the, um, percentage increase that Bridgewater is proposing, um, were to be what the budget reflects, then that would also precipitate a reduction in Rainham's percentage, correct?
Yes, the regional agreement states that if we have to do a reduction on one side, we would then have to do a reduction to the assessment to the neighboring town. So if I'm, rough numbers, looking to kind of at that, the Rainham assessment would be probably under three percent.
So that would be, how much of, do we, we know with you or Dr. Piewandowski, how much of a cut that would be in what you're proposing at this point?
About two point two million.
Two point two million. Would that be able to support any of those eight positions?
No.
Would there be cutbacks? I know Mr. Wood mentioned there are no cutbacks in Bridgewater, no layoffs, which, of course, we hate layoffs.
We, we would have to look at, um, I, I, I could, I could confidently say that none of the new positions would make it through the budget process, and we would most likely have to look at possibility of some current positions in the district in order to make that number.
Ma'am, I apologize.
That's okay. Um, hi, my name's Carrie Bashand. I, um, was born and raised here in this town, and I have a tenth grader that goes to BR and a sixth grader in the Williams School. Um, I'm here tonight, um, basically to highlight my concerns about school safety. Um, Mr. Swenson was nice enough to meet with me and a fellow mother, um, was it just yesterday? Um, so we were really able to discuss, you know, um, a little bit of what our deficits are, and, you know, some of the plans I think that the school is, um, hoping to implement, you know, going forward to keep our, our kids safe. But, um, ah, sorry. Um, I, myself and Kim, Antrim is her last name, um, recently spoke with, um, I think he's the chairman of Middleborough Schools, and he was really able to give us some, um, some pointers, like where we could, you know, um, put some of our budget money, like resources and things that we could maybe do to help with the deficit that we don't have here. Um, and I'm actually going to be meeting with, um, some other moms to kind of brainstorm some ideas. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of losing my train of thought here. So, yeah, I think benchmarking on how, um, some of the other schools are getting money to do these things and the changes that they're implementing in their schools will hopefully be helpful to make up some of where we can't seem to find this money, because, I mean, honestly, these are our kids, and I, I can't put a price tag on their safety. I'm sure you guys probably all agree with me on that one, um, and not saying here that anybody else is trying to, but just that it's obviously something that me and a lot of the other parents are seeing, um, an increased, an increased need for some safety, um, measures in our schools. And can I ask a question? And I am painfully new to all of this. I'm trying to get involved, and so I'm learning a lot. Thank you. Um, Mr. Wood, is it? Can I ask? Um, hi. Um, can you, can you tell me a little bit, and I'm, I apologize if it's been said or if I should know this, but with the increase, um, in population that we do have in the town, like it's really growing fast, which does, you know, put a strain on the teachers as far as the number of students, which why we're asking for more faculty, and we don't always get it. Um, with all the new houses being built and all the tax money that comes from these houses, like, does that mean that the town gives the school more money? Like, how does that?
If you'd like to, Mr. Wood.
I'm sorry if I just, I'm trying to-
Should, I'll, I'll sit. Thank you. No, I'll sit.
She's heard me speak before. Um, that, that's an excellent question, and, uh, I didn't have the enrollment numbers until tonight, but I do have the enrollment numbers for the past, um, ten years, I think it is. And since two thousand and ten, the, the overall enrollment in the BR district has fallen. Um, I think it, I think the fifty-four hundred may be slightly up from last year, but, um, it's, it's down from about fifty-eight hundred in two thousand and ten. So new houses do typically bring in new kids. Um, there's a lot of arguments in the, in the studies whether, uh, a new house will generate, uh, for every dollar that, of tax revenue that's get generated, typically in a new house, um, about a dollar forty-five. I contend it's a dollar twenty-five of services are needed. So it's, a new structure is, um, i- it does, does create, uh, costs. On the other hand, Bridgewater as a community, and I can't speak for Rainham, is now an aging community. Um, a lot of the new developments that, that pressured, um, the actions in two thousand and ten, a lot of those families, uh, like mine, have kids in college now, um, that they've already gone through the school system. Some of the neighborhoods, the cul-de-sacs and whatnot that were populated with kids playing basketball, have, have turned into, uh, you know, older, uh, empty nests. So there's a balance. I can't tell you what the exact mix is, uh, going forward. Thank you.
If I could just talk briefly about the enrollment piece, I think it's, you know, numbers can be used many different ways, but I think what, if you really truly look at the numbers, Mr. Wood, you're seeing a fa, of that number falling off from the eighth grade to the high school, where we have a lot of students now that are accessing things such as vocational schools, agricultural schools, uh, parochial schools. But if you really look at our K-four numbers, and I've done this because we've, working with MSBA for the new building, and you look at it from a longitudinal look, from, say, kindergarten in, uh, you know, five years ago in two thousand and thirteen to where they are now as fourth graders, and you kind of go down on a diagonal, each of those cohorts have, have grown by twenty-five to thirty students, which is a classroom teacher, if not two. So I think we, what we need to look at is, these new homes, it's a four hundred, five-hundred-thousand-dollar home, they're not bringing in empty nesters. They're usually bringing in families with children. So build it, and they will come. And they're coming. And it's creating a situation for us in our classrooms. That's why we are advocating for additional classroom teachers, especially at that K-four level.
Moving on, does anyone else want to comment? Please come to the podium.
Yeah, I just want to say that I don't know about the exact year, two thousand and eight, and the numbers, but I did have students in the high school at that time, and there was a time around there when we went through NIOSC, and we were going through accreditation problems because of class size and facilities like that. So, yeah, maybe the numbers were higher then, and they're close enough, but it wasn't a good with it as far as NIOSC goes, from my standpoint.
Thank you, Mrs. Scovares.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Antrim, and I have two children in the school system, and one coming in next year. And I just want to touch again on school safety. Um, it doesn't seem to be in the school budget, and I've identified some flaws within the schools, and I've talked to the principal, and I've talked to Mr. Swenson about it. But what i, what are the future goals for school safety, and where is this in our budget?
Well, if you look at, and I know that we had a conversation yesterday about-
Right.
-not only this budget, but over previous year budgets, from where we've come since, you know, my time in the district. Um, you know, when, when I first came in, we didn't have the buzzer systems, the entry systems. We now have those card swipe systems at every building. We have, now have, uh, security cameras at every building. We have monitor systems in the main offices of every building. Um, Mr. Fox, our director of facilities this year, got us university, universal walkie-talkies. I have one here that connects all of us, district-wide together, so if there's an emergency in any of the buildings, and say that myself or Mr. Powers or someone, um, is out of the building, you can still have direct contact with your building and, and buildings of others. As Mr. Murray alluded to earlier, we do have two school yourself officers within the district, one on the Bridgewater side, one on the Rainham side. Uh, this year, we have implemented our Alice program, which is, um, you know, a, a cultural shift from the traditional lockdown. Um, Mr. Powers and I actually had a conversation today with our director of facilities, Mr. Fox, about hosting a further training i- in our district, probably the first week of August, and having close to fifty of our administrators, school committee members were opening it up to community members, police officers, so that we have, um, a, a number of folks within our district, um, trained as trainers of, in the Alice program, so that we can then go back to our, uh, sites and actually lead trainings with our staff, with our students, lead those drills that we're now practicing. Um, we do meet with our safety and security team four times a year, which is basically our chiefs of, uh, police on both sides of the district, our chiefs of, uh, the fire department, our administrative team. We constantly look at and revise our, our safety protocols. So there are a lot of things that may not be reflective in a budget that, that we are constantly doing to improve the safety of, of our district. And in speaking with our chiefs, and I was had this conversation with Chief Donovan, uh, just the other day at our safety and security meeting prior to, he basically stated, when he meets with other chiefs from other districts and talks about the things that we have done so proactively over the course of the last five years, we, we are really leaps and bounds, um, you know, above what other districts are at this time. Does that mean that we don't have room for improvement? Obviously, yes, and we'll look to do that and work with our safety and security teams to try to address issues that come up throughout the course.
Okay. So yesterday during our meeting, we spoke about the Mitchell School specifically, and that how people piggyback into the door. We spoke about how the door did not lock, and you said that the hinge was just changed yesterday. Um, you al, we also spoke about how you had conversation about putting in a second door, because if anyone just came in that one door, and I could walk in as anybody, and I could say, "Here for base," and I would be buzzed in, I could run right up those stairs, and I could, those kids would be gone. What are we doing to improve that safety for our children?
Again, through our safety and security team, we have had those conversations. We've actually had that conversation with Chief Del Monte about that entrance. Obviously, that school was designed as a high school-
Right.
...not as an elementary school. Because of the situation that we had with the Mitchell Elementary School, we had to utilize that space. Over time, we have identified areas that really truly-
Right. But you've had the conversations of these things. Have we looked into what it would cost to put this in?
Yes.
Are they in the budget?
Um, they'll, they would come under Mr. Fox's area of his operational budget, yes.
Okay.
Either through his operational budget, or possibly through his facilities account, which is a revolving account, to look at, to make some of those, um, uh, adjustments probably over the summer months.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your concern, and please know that the members of the committees share your concern. Security is so important.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hi there, my name's Michelle Danubio, and I'm on ninety-seven Whipper Wheel Drive in Rainham. I just have a quick question about Dr. Piewandowski's, um, everyone here, their minds are listening to the numbers, seeing them, and you guys are living them, so it's hard for some of us to come into it. Um, did you say there was three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of facility stuff? Did I misunderstand when you said that it would be normally, anything over ten thousand should be paid by towns, and this was not? Can you just clarify that? Just want to make sure.
No, well, that was money that the, three hundred and ninety-one thousand was money that the district budget spent. So let's say, uh, a boiler breaks at the Rainham Middle School for twenty thousand dollars. We would repair it because it needs to be repaired in a timely fashion, and then because it's over ten thousand dollars, we would send that bill to the town of Rainham. But let's say, um, something breaks for seventy-five hundred dollars. Because the general consensus agreement has been that if it's under ten, we fix it; if it's over ten, the towns fix it. So, you know, if a seventy-five hundred dollars, something broke, we would absorb that in our budget. So this three hundred and ninety-one thousand, uh, two hundred and five dollars, that is what we have spent out of our operational budget, not what we've sent to the town.
I got you.
And we also, our district, we are in charge of the high school. So we had an issue with the sprinklers, so they all had to be replaced. So you'll, you'll notice that that, and the HVAC system, which probably never quite worked, so.
So is that part of the, the question that Mr. Dolan, or, you know, in terms of, it's all coming from the same place, if it's, you know-
It is, and well-
Eighty-nine hundred versus ten thousand and one hundred, like, you know, is that being looked at, I guess?
But, well, to be fair to the towns, um, you know, if, if one town has older buildings or one town has a lot of things that happen to go wrong, um, we want to be sure that that town is responsible for their own buildings. So, you know, and again, we had that sort of ten thousand dollar agreement, which has, was worked well, and, and perhaps we need to look at that again, but, um, it is sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul, but to be fair to the two towns, let's say, for example, Rainham had, you know, a million dollars worth of things that went wrong, it's not really fair for Bridgewater to have to pay for the middle school and elementary school. So that's why we came up with that agreement, and of course, our budget does have to cover the high school. So to be fair to the two towns as much as possible, they are supposed to take care of their own buildings, and we do the high school as a, a together budget.
Right. I was just wondering if I had heard that correctly, or if that's part of the discussion, or going forward, changing that number perhaps, or?
I think part of the situation is because the buildings are aging-
Right.
-what the district is paying is increasing.
No, that's why I'm, that's why I'm asking the question.
Totally.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Wood.
I think one of the biggest takeaways from this process, and specifically tonight for everyone, is that our budget is bigger than just teachers in a classroom. For years, people have sort of operated with, "Oh, we're funding the schools, it's teachers in a classroom, it's teachers in a classroom." Well, we heard tonight that it's more than that. We're talking about safety and security of our students. We're talking about the aging buildings that don't belong to the district, but we are held responsible to maintain. So the towns need to, townsfolk, the town, everyone needs to realize it's not just teachers in a classroom anymore. It's so much more than that now. So as we move forward to next week's budget meeting, um, my hope is that people will stay engaged with this process, see it to the end, and not just attend our meetings, but also go to your selectman meetings, your council meetings, your town meeting in Rainham. Attend those meetings, have those conversations with your elected officials. They need to understand that education is not just a teacher in a classroom anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Anyone else from the public? See someone else? Please come to the podium.
I live eighty-lime in Place in Bridgewater. And, um, you know, I went through, I grew up in Bridgewater, so I've spent my whole life, went through the school system. I was the fir, one of the first classes in the Mitchell Elementary School, the first one to go through the new high school. And I also went through huge budget cuts in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, I think, around then. Um, so I didn't have art classes for years, I didn't have music classes for years. I had band, but that was amazing, but that was it. And, um, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about the prospect of the budget decreasing for the school this year, because, I mean, I th, it's, I think it's shocking how many, um, referrals there have been to school psychologists and how many hospitalizations there have been. I worked in a psychiatric hospital for a little while, and it's, um, you know, it's, it's really tough to think that some of our students have gotten to the point where they need that kind of, you know, support. And if we could provide that through school psychologists and school adjustment counselors, I mean, that is just, that would be so much better. Um, and- And, I mean, another question I have is, like, how many Bridgewater town council members are in attendance? I know we have one, but are there any others that are involved in the budget that are in attendance today? Two? Three? How many are on the school council? Do we know? The town council, sorry.
Eight?
Eight?
Council has nine.
Nine.
I just, I mean, I very much appreciate the council members who have attended, but I would think that this would be something that all of our council members should be attending, so that they can hear the opinions that we have and hear the details about the budget and how this affects the students in our school. But it's, I don't really have any questions other than that. I just want, I would encourage Bridgewater to fully support this budget, because I think that this is what our students need and what our society deserves. I mean, to the point of safety in school, what's safer than having our students' social, emotional needs met? So that's.
Thank you. Anyone else? Quite all right, Mr. Fitzgibbons, you're welcome at any time.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Riley. Tim Fitzgibbons, president of the Bridgewater Town Council. I just want to address Ms. Omen on behalf of one of my colleagues on the council, who last night in his council comments encouraged a lot of people to come down here and, and hear for themselves what happened. Mr. George couldn't be here tonight. He wished he could be, but he had family obligation. And so I just want to make sure that that point's made to Ms. Omen's point, that he certainly encouraged people to come, and he said, you know, his family obviously comes first. So he couldn't be here, but I did want to stand up for him. Thank you.
Thank you, and hopefully, everyone that's not here will watch it on cable. Anyone else who wishes to comment? Anyone else? Oh, yes. This is very good. The last two years, we didn't have input.
I have one quick question. You may have, have mentioned this earlier, Dr. on, relationship to busing and transportation. My name is Bob Reese. I'm a non-munital driver, and also a member of the town. Is, what kind of considerations, perhaps, have been given to the busing and the students and how they are, please?
So if we could, just for the sake of the viewers on TV, Mr. Reese will repeat your question. Mr. Reese is asking about transportation and busing, but I'm not, are you asking about the contract, Mr. Reese? I just, I'm not.
Well, the contract per se, but how it's going to affect the existing students. I hear rumors that it's only one more year for some of them.
Mr. Reese, I apologize for not recognizing you as a town official. Mr. Swenson, do you want to respond to that?
Uh, Mr. Reese, I think you're speaking to the pay-to-ride program. And, and that is for students who live under one-point-five miles from their site. And next year will be the last year of that program. It was a situation where we do not receive reimbursement under state regulation for those students, and it was creating a deficit for us of close to a hundred forty thousand dollars a year to run that program. So unfortunately, the decision has been made to eliminate that program as of the 2019, '20 school year.
So you didn't receive reimbursement from the state to what you expected?
We don't receive reimbursement for those students at all. The state states that they only reimburse regional districts for students that live one-point-five or over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. My name's Maria Higblum. I'm a Bridgewater resident and a parent of two children in the school district. It seems a little strange to come and ask you to consider putting resources in, into anything after the conversations we've heard about how little money there is. But I spoke before to this group, and I just want to reiterate my concern about the pay for, basically, the band directors at the high school. Even if there isn't a position for a new band director, it's my understanding that the stipend that is offered to the marching band directors is pretty insignificant in terms of the amount of hours that they put in. And speaking also to the social, emotional health of students, this is a central thing for students. It's not just about teaching them to play instruments. It is a home for students who don't have homes in other kinds of places like athletics. And I think that a little bit of money in these areas goes a long way. So when we're talking about a budget of twenty-seven million dollars, five thousand dollars to sustain the kind of work that very dedicated music instructors are already doing, to make sure that they're around and will provide those opportunities for our students, I think is a small amount of money that makes a huge difference in many students' lives. So I know that you're having to make a lot of very difficult choices about how to spend money. I think things like this are not, can be low-cost and very big impact, so I just want to encourage you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for even.
Thank you. And we did, we did have some really great meetings with our junior music boosters and our music booster parents that came in. And some of the stipends that you're referring to, ma'am, are actually contractual, so there's nothing we can really do to increase the amount of those unless we were to open up the contract and, and work with our, our BREA and, and look at that. But we did talk about possibly creating some short-money positions to help supplement the folks that do such a tremendous job, Mrs. Griffin and, and Mrs. Madeiras, who've, who've really done a great job of, of increasing the numbers to, to the marching band. And obviously, we want to, and the music program as a whole at Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School, and we want to continue that, that growth. So we have explored some ideas outside of the traditional stipend that you speak to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Any other comments from the public at this time? Hearing no other comments. Committee members, one last, any comments? Then I would entertain, having heard all of the input today, and believe me, we'll take it all under consideration very seriously, I would like to ask for either a motion to continue this hearing or to close the hearing. Motion to close by Mrs. Skuparis, second by Mr. Delphi. I believe we need a rule call vote. Mrs. Skuparis?
Aye.
Mr. Delphi?
Aye.
Mrs. Holber?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond? Mr. Marrera?
Aye.
Dr. Pruwendowski?
Aye.
Chair votes, votes aye. We close the public hearing at eight-twenty-four PM. Thank you all for attending. Do we want to recess? Do we need a recess, folks? Go right into the meeting. We'll take a very brief, like a thirty-second recess, and in case anyone wants to leave, but we'll be continuing with the regular meeting.